I will call the planning commission meeting in order. Do we have a roll call?
Yes. Number Hill.
Present.
Number Campbell.
Present.
Number Abrams. Number Bruton.
Present.
Number Geiger. That's number Schultz. Number Breyer.
Here.
Record show here at six oh one, right after we do both. So with that, in our packets that's mailed out and available to us on this panel, is the approval of the minutes of the planning commission meeting from June twentieth, as well as the joint study session of July ninth. And hopefully everyone has a chance to review those. Is there any changes? Seeing no changes, a motion to adopt our two minutes.
So this is Hamilton. I move to approve the two sets of minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
I had one edits on the minutes. This is Jennifer Schulte.
Okay.
Um, the W should be WS dot. It's the correct abbreviation for Washington Department of Transportation.
Oh, so it says WA instead of WSDOT. Okay.
Yep.
So as amended, would you have approval of the minutes?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Show that Jennifer has also attended. We missed you on the roll call, so that's good. Six oh two. I'm just trying to be very efficient here. So that gets us, we don't have any hearings, I don't believe, today. That gets us things, that gives briefings and discussion. So I will turn it over to you, Justin, for our twenty twenty four comp plan.
Twenty four comp.
Well, okay, great. Thank you so much. Uh, let's just scroll to the next slide. I really like this slide because it shows that we're making progress.
Progress.
Uh-oh. Echo canceling.
Jennifer, if you can hear us, can you please say something?
I can hear you guys.
Good.
Okay, great. Right, well, I will start again. Thank you so much. And, uh, there we go. So we're making great progress. Uh, we have, um, tonight, we're going to talk about the transportation comments and some adjustments that we've made related to those. We're going to introduce first the utilities and capital facilities, goals and policies, a high level introduction, and then those will be emailed to you tomorrow, I believe, right, Justin? That's your plan. Um, so that you can start your review of those before our next planning commission meeting. So I guess if you go to the next slide, it kind of covers um, that piece. And we'll go on to talk about, um, go ahead and be efficient tonight as, uh, as we talked about. Okay, so the first goal for capital facilities is to monitor our capital facilities and provide high quality, sustainable, equitable, and affordable services for current and future Mill Creek residents and employees. And I think this goal is patterned after, um, previous school. We probably added in sustainable and equitable to be consistent with some of the regional and county policy language. Um, but you can see the policies here are what you would expect to see, nothing really out of the ordinary, um, everything from inventorying and monitoring against level of service standards, um, same with any annexation proposals to looking at funding, impact fees, capital improvement planning, in sync with growth, coordinating with service providers on an ongoing basis, and then, um, you know, looking at how we plan for city provided services is part of this, uh, section as well. So you see some policies on that, and then mitigation of development impacts. I think what I'll do is I'll go through capital facilities first, and then we'll pause for any discussion questions, and then we'll go through utilities. So we can go on to goal two, which is to develop, implement, and maintain a long range financial plan for city operations. So this is all pretty standard. Um, capital facilities planning is really required by the Growth Management Act, and it's not only required, but it's a really good thing to do for your cities, to make sure that you're planning your growth and your infrastructure and as you go forward. Uh, let's move on to goal three, and, uh, this one's becoming extremely important here where we're experiencing the need to really bring our stormwater, um, facilities and system into full compliance. And so we're going to continue to provide systems that are planned, developed, and maintained to reduce flooding, protect water quality, and preserve natural systems. And the policies include compliance with Department of Ecology regulations, ensuring that we're completing facility inspections, and then um, integrating development requirements, including low impact development into, um, into our codes and standards.
Mandy?
Yes.
Is there a readily acceptable definition when it said, oh, back one, where it says with ecology, does that mean, I mean, is that limited to like the state of Washington or federal, or is that, is that, I think it covers everybody?
It's really, uh, the ecology reference there, uh, Commissioner, that is for the Department of Ecology state. So we should probably make that more explicit.
Maybe it should say Department of Ecology then, is what my question was. Thank you.
More specifically, can we say like the phase two, uh, most of all stormwater permit or something like that?
Yes. And I will, you know, as we've done in the past, these policy statements are just kind of really, um, eclipsed statements of what the actual policy language is. So you'll be getting that policy language tomorrow. We, we've already sent it, so, um, it may not have that phase two language in there. I hope it does, but if it doesn't, please provide that as a comment back to us, and we'll make sure it gets in there. Thank you, Commissioner Geiger. Uh, yeah. Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see this becoming a phase one permit to anytime soon, but, um, yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah, we worked through that. Yeah, yeah, very good. All right. And then our final goal for capital facilities is to protect the environment and public health. And, um, with that, to facilitate protecting and enhancing the environment, public health and safety when providing capital facilities. So capital facilities also include police and fire services that meet the needs of the community as it grows, public safety and communications, and then resilience of our infrastructure. And again, there'll be more detail in the actual policy language, you'll see that. And we welcome your suggestions for any additional policies you'd like to see, or any revisions that you'd like to see in these language. So I'm going to pause there for a minute just to see if there are any questions or comments on the capital facilities goals. Yep.
And we're talking about capital facilities here. I know one of the things I've heard from the council is they're interested in some kind of community center. All it, you know, in the past, it was a, a senior center, but a broader, which one of these goals would that neatly fit into?
Very good question and good point. I would think that it would really relate to goal four, but we might need to add some language into goal four to kind of represent that community, community well-being aspect of things. So that's, I think that's a good idea. We could add a policy related to that if it's not in there.
Thank you.
They related to that, it's not in there.
I don't know what that was.
Oh, I had two kind of comments. This is Jennifer Stine line. Um, one is that when we talk about maintaining, can we also add for improving, um, more feasible? Um, we're not necessarily satisfied with the status quo if we can improve things. And the level of service they're currently meeting, I, I think what some people are suggesting being very explicit, um, with our permitting, I would make it more generic, um, to allow for if we ever need other future permits, um, from either the Department Ecology, which implements USA. So I would say more state and federal regulatory permits and compliance, um, just to cover bases in there. And then in the financial one, I think we should explicitly add a goal in there for proper financing to ensure compliance, especially with the water permit that's currently out of compliance.
And may I ask a question of Commissioner Schulte, Chair? Um, for the first one that you were recommending adding improving to, was that for goal? Which goal was that? Uh, goal three?
Um, it was like one and three.
One and three. Okay, got it. And, um, and then I'm so sorry for the finance. Can you just repeat that again? I, I didn't quite catch it for.
Yeah, and proper financing for, um, compliance with, uh, required, uh, regulations and permitting in particular are our stormwater permit.
Okay, got it. And again, um, I'm writing down your comments, taking notes. You're going to see these tomorrow, and so these comments won't be reflected, but we will definitely add those in, so. And feel free to do red lines and comments to, um, to add these, but know that I am noting these, so just want you to know, yeah.
Commission, any other questions on the capital facilities portion of this?
I think the only thing I would add is, um, on number three, the stormwater one, just where it says inspections, uh, I would also add like maintenance and improvement. You know, it's one thing to just inspect, but you need to follow up with all you find.
Right. So great to have all your expertise on this. Thank you.
Please.
Uh, I do have a question on the police and fire meeting, as population grows. Um, my main question on that, uh, is because this is capital and capital facilities. I'm thinking that means the facilities in which the police and fire are housed and the equipment that we provide, uh, the vehicles, the uh, communications, the armament, uh, whatever we have, um, but not necessarily the people doing it. I don't know exactly how we do that, that, that people are not capital, they're labor. Um, but how do we, I want to make sure that we're saying we're going to provide for the capital needs.
Yeah.
But it's not the full, like, finance of, of the police department, the fire, well, we're not doing fire now.
We're not doing fire now?
I mean, the city doesn't, we now, it's, it's not contracted anymore.
That's true.
It's, it's, we are now in a fired district and we're voting members of it. We pay a tax directly to that.
Okay.
So, um, but I don't know if we still own the fired, the, the station.
That would be one to track.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be a part of what is in our inventory.
Yeah.
We, I know we used to own a portion of it. I think that part of the agreement in going to that was that we would sell them or give up our portion. I don't remember how it worked. I don't remember what the final agreement was on that.
Okay.
My, my Todd would be able to answer that, and it is a good piece because
Yeah.
last comp plan, it was within the city and contracted, and now we've changed to a different governance, so.
Right. So with regard to the labor, the services, typically this section also should include public services, um, because I really can't think of where else, I mean, unless they're parks related, it would be in the parks element. Um, so maybe we just need to provide some definition or something in, in the introduction that talks about.
Yeah, in, in that same case, then say our, our city maintenance department and what they do, and so the people there that work there, how, how do we define them within them, they're not capital. Um, but we fund them, the city funds, you know, pays for their labor, so, uh, in the same way them and any potential future, uh, recreation department.
Yeah.
If, if that were to come to pass. I know it's a thing we've talked about, but we don't yet currently have that.
Okay. Thank you. I, that reminded me too that I wanted to mention that, um, Director Todd is still reviewing this section, and we're going to have a little bit of a work session with him to dial in on some of the details, just so you know. So there might be, in addition to receiving your comments, we'll probably be folding in some additional staff comments and into the final version.
Because, yeah, we do note in here, as you say, under protecting environment and public health, the facilities, but only call out the police and fire. We don't call out the public services, planning on all the other
Yeah.
city staffing pieces, so we just got to be cautious. Yeah.
Okay.
And it may be in your, this is just as you said, our abbreviated version, so.
Hey, I'm not sure, but we will definitely get it in, in the appropriate location, and we'll do some checking on that. Now that should be handled.
I'm sure Director Todd will catch that.
Yeah.
At the same time, I'm glad we're catching it too.
Any other additional comments on the capital facility questions? Mandy, back to you.
All right. So now we'll move on to talk about utilities, goals, and policies. Our first goal is to coordinate with service providers to support the planned growth of Mill, Mill Creek and including the growth in, in the sub area. And to make sure that we're timing and phasing growth, um, or services to align with growth, making sure that we have adequate utilities for development. Some of that happens with development. So there's a nuance there as part of that policy, and then providing, coordinating with providers to let them know what our growth forecasts are, so that they can then do their planning accordingly. So the utilities includes not, um, only city provided utility service, but a lot of other, you know, vendors that provide utility services. Let's see, we'll go on to goal two, which is a bit longer. Um, but this one is really about coordination to ensure, um, appropriate development regulations are met, and that utilities are provided in a manner that's fiscally and environmentally responsible, aesthetically acceptable to the community, and that do, do not pose an undue health risk or nuisance to residents and employment, um, job, employees, I guess, in the community. And so you'll see policies under this goal related to permitting and approvals, development regulations, essential public facilities, impact mitigation, undergrounding of utility, co-location of new facilities, coordination of opportunities for installation during construction. That's really important. You know, you don't want to tear up a road and then have to come back and tear it up later to add in a utility improvement rate. So just a good policy around that. And then locating human services near transit is also part of, um, part of this goal.
I do have a question. Um, so which, uh, policy would cover the maintenance of those utilities, right? Because obviously, you know, it's one thing I see it like the, and maybe just my unfamiliarity with, uh, some of these portions, but like permits, I would always think of when you're first doing it. But like, which, what covers the utility? Don't wait fifty years till everything's leaking to fix it.
Yeah, that's a good, a good comment. I'm not seeing that jump out, um, directly from the framework that we have in front of us. Where maintenance would fit, I think it does sort of fit under goal two, the most appropriately. And there is the word maintained in there, but maybe we need to emphasize it a little bit more. I can really see where you're going with that, Commissioner, so we can make, make, make that more clear. Yeah.
Questions? Like, could you maybe give me a few examples of what human services are that we would be locating near transit?
Well, I, related to utilities, I think these could be like communications, fiber optic, or, um, internet services, those kinds of things. I'm not sure that it would, they would include any, any private, I don't think they would include any privately provided services, you know, such as healthcare, things like that. Um, so transit would be another type of human service, but that would be covered under transportation. So I think we need, we'll, we'll dig into that a little bit deeper, understand that a little bit more. But for utilities, that's the only thing I can think of is maybe communications, yeah.
But I think maybe to, uh, Benjamin's point there, it's, it's, it's meant, it's not meant to be like at the actual facility of a medical provider, right? I, I just want to, I think that, that I feel like, I feel like where that confusion could, but.
Yeah.
I didn't know exactly what it could mean. That was, that was whether I wanted to try and narrow that down, or if it's, yeah, medical provider or.
We'll dig into that a bit deeper. It should be public. Should be public utilities type services, yeah.
Any other comments on two? And we'll have a chance to go back.
Yeah.
Um, I have one that's just kind of, and I'm not sure if it belongs in you, but since as a city, we don't own most of our utilities, we have third party providers that, you know, right within our city, um, jurisdiction, is to make sure that we have good, um, MOUs, or my understanding of the relationship between the city and outside agencies, and to ensure that the city of Mill Creek and its constituents provide its fair share for funding future improvements. Uh, like a big one is we don't have our own water sewage, you know, our city is actually split between two water districts, and I think both are facing sewage growth, um, upgrades that are needed in the near term future. And to make sure as a city, since we don't own those, we don't get cut out from them, and that we are doing our fair share in the growth and improvements needed for those.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Very good suggestion, Commissioner Schulte. And again, I think, um, I've, I've noted that, and in your comments, if you, you know, if you want to suggest some language, that would be really welcome. Thank you. All right, goal three then is about, um, maintaining access to utilities and making sure that it's, uh, sustainable, affordable, and equitable access of utilities to all neighborhoods. And so, um, this is where we see telecommunication, which is kind of interesting, but long-term planning for telecommunication. You know, we often hear in planning that some areas of communities have access to heights, high-speed internet, but others don't, and it should be more equitable, broadband, that kind of thing. And so that's one of those areas that we always want to make sure is, you know, being expanded to serve the full community. Um, the resilience of utilities, so that they're not always just breaking down in one area or another, but, um, that we're keeping a good system citywide to serve everyone. Demand management, conservation, thinking about, for example, water conservation or energy conservation. And a lot of the utility providers do provide recommendations to their customers about energy conservation or water conservation. So just having the city be a support, a support to that type of service. Um, and then renewable and distributed energies resources, you'll see, as well as electric vehicle infrastructure addressed in these policies.
Questions?
Okay, um, is there perhaps, are we going to use a specific definition of neighborhood here where, to me, that, that kind of relates more to, um, where people live? So for instance, over here in our more commercial district, are we actually excluding them?
Good points.
I, I want to make sure that we're, if, if we're going to put a policy in there, we're going to use words that I'd say to everybody, I want everybody. But if we actually mean to households, then okay, households. If that's, I want to be clear on what we mean.
You're right.
Um, okay, great. And then.
It should be all customers, and maybe community is a better word than neighborhoods or something like that.
Maybe even all areas, all parts of Mill Creek. I, I don't, something along those lines that just kind of, I just wanted to make sure that neighborhood didn't mean just houses.
Just not the usual is.
Yeah, right, like, yeah, like not just them, right?
Got it.
Um, and then I did have one question about renewable and distributed energy resources. I kind of assume that this is relating to people putting solar panels on top of their house, or on top of an apartment building, or on top of the parking garage, or whatever it is, right? Um, does this, I haven't gotten a chance to look at the proposed policies yet. Um, does this mean affording growth of those types of things and installation or maintenance of them? Do, is that a goal that the city would have, or that we would say partner with an energy provider or somebody that would hook people up to those things? And maybe if we wanted to actually invest and try to have that be a thing in our, in our, uh, city, where we might incentivize that in some way, or provide permits, or, I mean, provide an expedited permit process, or anything about a list of trusted installers or something like, I don't know what it means to us to enable something like that? If that's what we're talking about, which is what I'm imagining we're talking about.
I believe it is, and I think those are all great suggestions to, when we drill down into the details to make sure. Um, and it's, it's really, I think, up to the city to, to determine how they want to support a program like that, but it would be, you know, the, the customers or the installers would be customers of that energy providing agency, whether it's um, Seattle City Light. Who, who provides power here?
Yeah.
Oh, so, thank you. I'm so sorry.
No, HVAC guy was working, and then I got way late, and I didn't go back and close it. Thank you for noticing that.
He might get muted.
You're good, you're good for me. Thanks. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Oh, I didn't realize he was even on.
Um, I would also like to edit that we not just focus on solar, but also as like geothermal, which is an appropriate consideration for our region.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions or comments on goal utility three? Mandy finish writing?
All right, one more.
Our goal.
One more.
Maybe, maybe on that note, just say renewable energy or something like that, so we're not limiting to ourselves.
Whoops, scared more general.
Like future technologies.
Yeah, true.
Right.
Who knows?
Many fusion reactors.
Why not?
We want to future-proof ourselves here, right?
Okay. Great.
We get more course.
All right. So the last, uh, goal for utilities is to implement and monitor level of service standards and service providers' plans for utilities in Mill Creek and the Mooga. Uh, and so this one is, it's going to depend on who the service providers are, and as has been mentioned, uh, many of your utility service providers are not the city. So, um, it just means that the city would monitor how other service providers are meeting their level of service standards. They would monitor their, um, systems planning and how that's being done, um, when it's done, when those are periodically updated. Um, looking at, uh, provisions of things such as high-quality drinking water. So you'll see more detail in the policy statements, but it's, um, just making sure that the services and utilities that are provided are provided to a level of standard that is, um, supporting the health and welfare of the community.
Can we add waste and diversion from landfill?
I believe there was like probably wastewater and diversion from landfill.
Okay, solid waste.
Solid waste, because we contract with solid waste.
Yeah.
Recycling and yard waste.
Great, okay.
Did I, did I cover that appropriately, Jennifer? You kind of cut in and out. I didn't have my mic.
Yeah, yeah, that was correct.
Wonderful.
Other comments or questions on either goal four or the whole utility? Well, we look forward, anything, Jennifer, online? I think we got a little delay. Well, with that, we'll, we'll. I think we got a little delay. Well, with that, we will look forward to getting these sections to comment on and.
Yes.
Anticipate those being in your email with a due date and try and make it so we can get it back to.
Wonderful.
Justin filling in for Simo and get it to our consultants to help us.
So we're going to move on now to give a summary of the feedback that we received on the transportation goals and policies. And you want to go to the next slide, uh Justin, just some of the high level. Um, we received comments back from four commissioners. There were several. As much as we've talked about tonight, several great suggestions about language and phrasing. That we will incorporate into the revisions. There weren't really any large scale concerns with the goals and policies. Um, and then we can kind of discuss uh specific feedback and ideas today on a per. Um, per goal basis and of course Drew's here, so happy to talk through these. And I might turn it over to you, Drew, if you want to kind of go through each goal and some of the feedback that we received. Is that cool?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've already incorporated a number of your comments uh into our draft goals and policies. But there were uh some of the comments that I thought would be good to discuss, just to make sure that we are, we're. We're hearing you correctly in terms of what your ideas are and making sure that our phraseology is correct, once we, once we add things into the, into the policies. So, one comment was around intercity transit and. And we added a uh additional item to a list of, of our emerging trends to explore around microtransit. And just for the commission's information, uh uh community transit does have a long term goal of pursuing microtransit services. Um, to supplement uh existing and future fixed route services. And I, I think that was also something that we talked about in the, in the workshop with the city council. Uh, so that is an area to explore. And so we just wanted to make sure that that conclusion um. Was, would suffice in terms of, of, you know, making sure that we're considering intercity transit. And, and the phrase that we're using is microtransit.
I think two people, people have different things in mind between intercity and microtransit in the population. They might serve, one is a ad hocks scheduled system versus a regular scheduled system. Um, you know, if you think about like the micro system that Bellevue has, where it's an ad hack or like dial a ride, that's all ad hoc. And you know, so, something like an intercity bus that would, you know, take people from. The neighborhoods of Mill Creek to either the town center, downtown um center plan. Or end or light rail is, is a little bit different, since it'd be a regular scheduled thing. Then what I think might come to people's mind when we say microtransit opportunities.
Yes, so we, we could have a separate policy, uh specifically, you know. Using the term intercity transit and focusing on neighborhood connections to BRT and light rail service. Something like along those lines uh to, yeah, to differentiate there. There was also a comment around the Port of Everett's impacts on, on our goals and policies. Um, I bet, was that uh Commissioner Briles, was that correct? Uh, would you mind adding a little context for us to make sure that we're, we're incorporating that?
Right, I, I was just, I understand that the Port of Everett uh is on our ballots here in a couple of weeks. Uh, for expansion to include most of the account, most of the county in the Port of Everett. Uh, whether they change that name or not, I don't know. Um, and I wanted to better understand how that might relate to. Especially transit and um how that might work with us, uh because. I'm not a hundred percent sure on what all, that the Port of Everett covers, um whether it's also our airports. Um, whether it's uh or like Payne Field, or whether it's um. Any of the transit that goes to there and the, you know, the commercial port and how that all works together. So I wanted to understand how that. There, whether there might be any impact with us and whether we need to be thinking about that in our transportation goals and policies. Because it had not been something that had been thought of for a hundred years, apparently. The last time they went to do this was more than a hundred years ago. Yeah, I, some, something like that. So, you know, if it, they've even brought up the question. So, I can't imagine it's been in a twenty year plan for a while. So I want us to think about that and how it might impact us. I'm, it's nebulous to me, I. Looking forward to getting my voter pamphlet, just so I can understand, what are you trying to do here?
Okay, we can definitely, you can say that more.
I mean, but would that be just like a generic eval- evaluate? Future or like, like, like right without saying specifically the.
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's it, especially, I don't know, if this one fails and they try again in a year or two years or four years or something like that, it's still within our twenty year plan. Um, and so we would need to understand where the impacts are for that. Uh, I guess the other part is by the time we meet again, that vote will have been held and we'll, we'll know whether it passes or not. So, I don't know. Either way, we should have some idea what we want to do with our policies relating to it if it were there. But if it's. Another service provider or with another regional.
Right.
Uh, organization, then it already kind of fits into things. So I just wanted to make sure that if there's something special that they can do that other. Regional service providers can't do, that we do include that within our possibility range.
Sure, maybe a suggestion around some language there since, since that, since that particular immediate need might change. And we're looking twenty years ahead, maybe there is some kind of language around coordinating with regional um transportation. Providers and.
Or special.
Ports or special. Yeah, special use districts to um understand.
Their benefit to the city.
Their benefits or impacts to Mill Creek, something along those lines.
Cause that would get your port as a special district and any other special district that we can envision to come in.
The transportation district that was drawn up for the light rail, for example, is something that. That might, you know, that, that was a new boundary, I think, wasn't it?
Uh, New York, the city, there's legislation with transportation benefit district, if the city were, were not, not that I'm proposing that, but you know, all those kind of things.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good.
Well, thank you.
In a, a number of places in the, in the policies list, we, we had reference to the downtown area. And that was in discussion with city staff. We, we weren't sure what to call necessarily, mostly as the Mill Creek Subarea Plan. But uh, we were looking to use a more generic term for that, but we, we can. We can make direct reference to Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea Plan. I, I know that's mentioned in some other policies. Um, or if there's another phrase we can use for basically the, the commercial districts west of Bothell Everett's.
It's an ongoing, I'll just tag on to say that's kind of an ongoing language challenge that we have is. That people don't know what Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea is, right? And it's not necessarily an all encompassing description for that subarea. And what we're really talking about is expanding town center to the south and. The gr- creating kind of a greater downtown area with the civic core. We sure would love it if you all could give some thought to that.
Commissioner Briles, you've been very good at terms.
Uh, no, I, I agree. Um, the Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea is um mouthful, and yet it's very accurate. As to what we're talking about. Um, the other part of it is that there's the town center as we know it along Main Street. Which I think is a part of what we're relating, we're referencing here. But then I know that we have some issues with people who want to make sure that we are not leaving out the eGov or other. Commercial corners that we've got that are very valuable and provide a lot of services in the city. So I don't. I don't know exactly how we want to say it, but yes, we do talk about a downtown area. Immediately what I thought of is town center and the new south town center that we might call it, you know, I don't know. I'm not going to come up with this name. This is not my area, but. But yeah, I don't know what the best name for this is. I think I know what you're talking about, actually, the west of five twenty seven. Within the boundaries, south of.
Yeah.
You know, um, what, like one, one forty eighth, maybe one fifty, it's not one fifty third, it's north of there. And then down to beyond one sixty fourth potentially, so. I don't, I don't know what the right terminology is for it, but it feels weird to call it a downtown to me for such a small town. Even though it's Main Street, so.
Pardon me.
Yeah.
Maybe we recraft language a little bit just around cities, mixed use centers or, you know.
Is it a commercial center?
Well, it's, it's more than commercial, you know, because we've been talking about the residential function there, particularly in the Mill Creek Boulevard area. And eGov is residential as well, so we'll just work on some language, I think. Mixed, mixed use centers perhaps, yeah. But, but I, point taken about, if you just, if you call it downtown, then that does seem to kind of leave out some of the other. You know, possible areas like, what's the Sprouts area called? I don't even know what that. Shopping center area.
Does have a shopping center and it's not the corner. Because that's actually just a bit.
In a, in Everett or something.
Yeah.
Okay, well, well, yeah, we'll, we'll work on some language. Good point.
Marks and pens. Okay, so there, there were a, a number of references, which are actually are in the existing comprehensive plan. Uh, in reference to pedestrian and bicycle facilities, um and using the phrase where feasible. Um, I, I think, you know, what we're doing a lot with this update is, is changing, changing some of the, the. The tone and language from the previous plan uh around the transportation goals and policies to be much more. Aspirational and long term oriented versus specific regulation level uh items. Um, so, so I think uh it does make sense to remove the where feasible. Um, I just wanted to, to clarify that for the, for the commission that we're, we're going to do that. And, and the reason is, is uh the, the golden policies are truly aspirational. So they're, you know, the golden policies is the part of the plan that isn't necessarily fiscally or physically constrained. That the, the plan has the fiscally constrained component, which is the, the project, the long term project list. Um, but we can still have a policy that says, yes, the city's aspiration is to have, for example. Sidewalks on both sides of every street in the city. Um, can we get there? Uh, uh feasibly financially in the next twenty years? Maybe not necessarily. But it's good to have the goal as, so that everyone knows um what, what the city's aspirations are. So just wanted to clarify that. Um, hopefully that makes sense.
As, as you point, just to reinforce that, as you point out, we could make progress.
As you point out, we could make progress towards an aspirational goal and not achieve it within twenty years, and we're not failing. It's a goal, you were heading in that direction. So it is something just for us to have, and then of course, where feasible will always come in. Eventually, the purse strings do get taught, so.
Yes, exactly. A, a, and our level of service standards um is where the, the uh more. Fiscally constrained feasibility level comes into play. Um, and so that keeps our, our goals and policies at that aspiration. There was also a comment about, uh, you know, looking into new pathway connections across, you know. Private property, um, um, like the golf course or, or, you know, coordinating with homeowners associations. That was a, a previous comment that, that came up. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that if, um, when we're drafting a policy around that. We're, we're using, we're using the right language that, that will make sense to all stakeholders. So. Um, we, we can say something along the lines of, you know, explore opportunities to. To provide new public right of way through, through easements on public, on private property, or something along those lines. Is that. Generic enough, but it still, so makes sense in terms of an aspiration?
True.
Question on that, because you know, when you use easement, what comes to mind is that the city has a right to have to go through this. Versus, I, 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 I thought the, something in the comments like that was more of, can the public use. A Mill Creek Association trails. I, I just want to make sure, like, like, is, isn't easement more? The city has a right, hey, we're gonna go pave through this private property. I, I just want to understand like, like. Or take on responsibility that.
I, I would suggest that we're not looking over the MCCA trails, but there is the whole wetland complex. Associated with the, you, you know, the east area, and the city doesn't own that, that's privately owned, but the city is interested in. Easements for recreational use across that. So how do we thread that needle where you include? Like in that area where we would like rights across that for all public, not just HOA, but not get into a. A scare with our own community of saying, oh, we're gonna, the city's gonna buy out MCCA trails or something else.
Yeah.
You know, we've had a long history of good cooperation between the two agent, you know, the two entities. And I don't think at this point we have a, a, a policy goal to have any more public ownership of the MCCA. Private trail system would be where I'm at. But we do have this element where, you know, there is some private property where we are interested in. Both the transportation benefit to it, you know, the non-motorized transportation benefit to some of that stuff around the wetlands and eGov. So that would be the needle I'd be looking for you to thread as you look at those things.
Okay. And I think there are two, two things going on there at once, right? There's, there's public access on existing private facilities, but then also. New, entirely new pa- potential entirely new pathways across uh ex- existing public, uh private property. Also from the, the twenty fifteen plan, there was the phrase serpentine and meandering sidewalks. Um, and we did receive uh, uh. We, we discussed this with, with city staff as well. Um, the, the thought of removing that, that phrase specifically was, that would be uh more of a. Design level uh, uh, item. Um, and so we were, we were trying to keep the, the. Policies more uh high level or general than, than that description. Um. But we can, we can keep it too, because there are other areas where we, we do have, you know, specific phrases that we're using as, as, as are important for, for the city to. To maintain as a policy.
That was one of my comments, because I see it as a signature element, just like City of Bothell has the little bridges they put in, and they put that in, and it's a policy level that they. Build those silly bridges down in Bothell, but you know you're in Bothell when you see one of their silly bridges. Uh, serpentine sidewalks are kind of a signature element of the city of Mill Creek. And so that's why I thought of it as a policy level, not really. I mean, it has some ADA issues, it has other issues with doing it, but. Um, it is an element that is very recognizable as a Mill Creek. That's why it was in the twenty fifteen comp plan too. So I hate to age myself, but yeah, I was involved in the transportation section.
Yeah, and that's always the balance we're trying to strike with, with these, is, is, you know, if it is some, something very specific like that, that is important to the city, then. Absolutely, yeah, we would, we would want to make sure that this stays in the policies.
The planners at the time felt it was in a, a, a noticeable element of the city. That and the, the tree buffer piece that I commented on in the last section were, were signature elements of, quote, Mill, Mill Creek.
Is there been any, any comments over the years? I know like there's a meandering sidewalk on either one or both sides of five twenty seven. And I guess I'm thinking about it from a safety standpoint, you're out there walking behind, you're not right next to the traffic, you're.
There's a separate policy that says we want a, a median, you know, our landscape median between the, the traffic and everything else. But the question is then, does a sidewalk just go straight and through uh adjacent to the roadway, three feet off? Or do you have it meander in the city policy? And they did use the comp plan at that time with five twenty seven in order to push the savings.
Yeah, um. A lot of the staff don't like the meandering sidewalks, they make it difficult to maintain, and they've. I'm only sure that there's not implemented very well, so maybe just better design standards for them, like at eGov. The farm where they installed that meandering sidewalk on the south end that, and it looks terrible, because it's too meandering. Yeah, if you look straight down it. Um, but it's definitely an options, I'm thinking maybe. Like in the, the Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea, it may be difficult to have meandering sidewalks in that urban context. But you could perhaps have uh like a textured sidewalk where you have like a serpentine pattern that winds, that winds through. The sidewalk where you have like a, a serpentine pattern that winds, that winds through. Um, the sidewalk that could be a, would implement that in a more urban context.
Well, I think it's a consideration for that in the appropriate area and appropriately designed, you know, it's not everywhere just in your, it, it is, you look at. The old MCCA, it's actually pretty well done, there's.
Yeah, the, the old MCCA, there's some great, uh, meandering sidewalks, just hasn't, hasn't always been installed as good in subsequent.
Yeah.
Projects.
And that's also good.
This also goes back to, as we talk about aspirational, right? We don't necessarily have to do this in every single case.
Yeah.
So. It's not so bad to keep it and to have some meandering sidewalks and not every single sidewalk has to meander.
That would be it. It's just, it's an element that the city. Thought was important then, and that's why it's in the comp plan, so that's why I commented about, ah, do you wanna drop this? I mean, it was specific and discussed at the time.
Great, and. A- another, uh, phrase that was in the prior plan that we had adjusted was the alternate traffic circulation routes and connectivity. Uh, what we did, uh, in response to your comments is we, we, we re-added the, the phrase increased street connectivity. Um, the reason that we, we, uh, removed the, the phrase alternate traffic circulation routes is because this. This whole policy is, is really a- a- around the idea of, of creating more of a grid-like roadway network. Uh, especially within the, the Mill Creek Boulevard sub area, if, if there are, you know, new connections going in. That, that would provide a, an alternate traffic circulation route, but I, but I guess the, the phrase alternate traffic circulation route could. Could conjure up images of, of, you know, a, a car-oriented focused connection. Versus street connectivity could, could be more. Multimodal in nature, like yes, it does have a, a traffic benefit because it gives people more options for, um, where they can turn and. And, uh, overall increases the capacity of, of the roadway network, um, wh- without it, the focus being on traffic circulation. That was the idea there.
Connectivity is, I, I was one who commented on that. Yeah, it was, it was all about connectivity and, and efficiency and not necessarily traffic. Still, uh, we live in a community like my own in Fairway, it's a hundred and sixty houses on a cul-de-sac, basically one entrance in and out, and so. If we do have more plats coming in, we don't wanna build plats where you have. Just a singular access into, you know, hundreds of homes, one from a safety standpoint and two from a, a pure connectivity neighborhood standpoint, so.
I'm surprised the fire department allowed something like that.
Common in some of the MCCA, but it is not great.
If you, if you do that now, all the homes would be sprinkled. For instance, so it's a significant cost, they probably wouldn't do it in the future.
Good point. Wonder if, um. Wonder if we drew, if we wanted to say increase multimodal street connectivity. As well, just to kinda underscore that point.
I, I actually really loved it.
Okay.
Because I do, I. There are some alleyways.
Yeah.
That are within MCCA that because I'm an MCCA member, I can walk through them and they're very nice. Just to have that alternate route that connects a couple of neighborhoods that there's no street that directly connects that, that you have to come back out on the. Trillium or Village Green and then go back out.
One, now this is actually one area where maybe we wanna add meandering. Traffic, the, it's, I've seen plenty of studies that show the traffic can be slowed and more safe. With a meandering path as compared to a more straight line path. We also don't have that much space within the sub area that we're. Kinda, I think mainly focusing on here as to what might be development, but if that meanders a bit, it does. Tend to slow traffic and if we're talking about a much more walkable area and pedestrian friendly, then. Slow traffic is a positive. And I'd much rather do that than speed bumps. I hate speed bumps. I hate.
Yes.
They penalize everyone that drives, not just those who drive too fast.
But, uh, I just a technicality question, so if this section here is under pedestrian bikes, would it apply to here or you, because then you're, you're, you're tamed to put it in under.
That's a great question and I think that's a. Think about that. I don't know exactly how to use it, but great point, we're under pedestrian bike, that's not necessarily. The only thing I'm talking about, it's actually to support pedestrian and bike in the sub area and in anywhere that meandering roads.
Yeah.
Tend to slow the drivers.
And there are other traffic calming techniques, you know, for example, trees along the side, tree-lined. Streets kinda narrow your field of vision, tend to slow traffic down or medians or refuge islands or even. Kerb extension crossings where, you know, the kerbs extend out, make the crossing distance shorter, but also. Well, we have those all throughout town center, right? So, so maybe the idea is, um, just encouraging traffic calming techniques. And that could include chicanes or meandering, a lot of different things in the toolbox.
That, that, and that might be a way in which we're supporting it through the pet and bike.
Yeah.
Policy here, which I think is, so I was just thinking about how we would, how meandering could be used still.
Yeah. On the Boulevard plan, we were working on it, weren't we talking about parking and does that? And does that just, does that tend to slow people down if you've got parking on both sides of the street?
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's a comment I remember back then.
Yeah, on-street parking is great for traffic calming, also for pedestrian friendly.
Yeah.
Can be challenging for bikes, so you have to really look at how that, I know Drew, Drew will comment on this, but how you really create that. Bike environment, whether it's a sharrow in a really low speed traffic situation, or you do. Cycle track or something different, but anyway, um. On-street parking is great for business too, right? It's, it's really adds a whole nether capacity level for, for the businesses. Um, that would grow along the Mill Creek Boulevard area, so. That's a good, we should make sure we have a policy that, that encourages that.
Town center, we have some parallel parking, we have some angle parking, it's, you know, very well done.
I. The one thing with, and I do appreciate the traffic calming, sorry, I know, we're gonna move. I find that street parking, especially in the town center, you might have people, as many times as we have crosswalks. Along Main Street, we have a lot of people that will, that pop out from behind, especially taller vehicles, it seems. And even when you're going twenty in the twenty-five, that can come up rather, rather quickly. Nobody wants to bump anybody, much less hurt them, much worse than that. So that's my only thing about on-street parking is, I guess, uh, actually angled in, it seems to happen a lot less. But it's the parallel parking that I have, I myself have witnessed this. The big studies might show that I'm in, I'm in, in error here. Maybe I just don't see it, perceive it the same way, but I think about that and say. Maybe there are other ways to slow down traffic.
Apparently.
Yeah, it happens.
Okay.
And I don't know what to tell you about, we have a number of raised crosswalks, so there are safe places to go, but yeah, and. This is where, uh, desire paths. Are, I think somewhat, you know, meanders too much, might be what you're talking, I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about when you say that the path meandered too much. But that's where sometimes you get desire paths and people just cross it anyway and take the meandering path. And so I see that along Village Green Drive. Yeah, you can definitely see a deer trail there.
But, but you're, just to clarify for him, so you're saying you're supportive of parking, but you want it designed so that it doesn't.
I'd, we, we're gonna have, we're ultimately, we would have to have parking in there.
Okay.
We absolutely would. How we do it, I'm not sure that I want that as parallel, but my own view is that. I see less of that people jumping out. With less time for a driver to react with angled parking as compared to parallel parking, but this comes down to like design review board, I think. More than anything else, so. Maybe we're, we're getting too in the weeds on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because the angled parking is a benefit the city can offer to developers as we go on providing some of that. And does it meet our overall goals as a planning commission by providing that parking so that they have less structure, they have less.
I, I would add to that some jurisdictions have required back-end angle parking, uh, as, as an alternative.
I, I think the day, I, I did that actually when I was a traffic engineer, but that was in the days before, uh, rearview cameras.
True.
And, and I think that you're seeing the studies are showing that that is less and less of a need because the, the. Vehicles now with the cameras, people can see behind them. I, I remember the studies in the day, before cameras where you just really didn't have the ability to. Back into traffic because the big SUV was parked next to you, but now.
Well, there's, not to get too off track, but there's a whole concept of back-end angled parking, which is.
I, I used that in Seattle and it was not, it was very difficult to implement and people would, would disobey quite commonly.
Correct, it, it does improve visibility, especially for oncoming bicyclists and things like that. But it's very hard for people to get used to doing it, that's for sure, yeah.
Continue on.
Oh, uh, uh, so not to make comments on, on the environmental goal, um, but just wanted to clarify. That, uh, what we did was, um, as we were going through the goals, goals and policies, uh, we had restructured the. The sections into where policies were being placed, um, so some of the revisions, um, when we struck out language, it was. Another goal, um, so I just wanted to make that point, uh, because I think there were some, some comments on, on that a- a- across the board, uh. In, in some of the other goals as well. Um, but, but the, but the point, um, of, of that. Uh, comment in, in the environmental section was, um, you know, a- as we are looking at. Making sure that our system is multimodal, we're also still considering traffic operations, but, um, that's mentioned in, in another, in another goal. So o- on level of service, there, there were a number of comments from, from the commission, um, especially around our automobile level of service standards. Um, we weren't anticipating making changes to the city's level of service standards as part of this update, unless there are, there are some. Uh, key issues that, you know, definitely need to be changed in this update. Um, in our review, we, we thought the level of service standards are still reflective of, of what this city's aspirations are. One thing to clarify on the level of service F for arterial to arterial intersections, um, that is an existing, uh. Mill Creek level of service standard, uh, and policy from the 2015 plan that we carried forward and the. Um, there is language in the existing plan, um, that we will also carry forward, which describes. Uh, why, why that is the case, um, essentially, we're working backwards from what are the potential improvements that can be done? To what is a level of service standard that, that makes sense, so in, in the case of, of. An arterial to arterial intersection that is already. In effect, built out from, from what the city's desire for those arterials is, uh, then. Then, uh, thinking of improvements from a roadway capacity standpoint doesn't make sense if the city doesn't want to. Uh, increase the capacity of those arterials, so that was the point of having the level of service F at. At the arterial to arterial intersection specifically, if that makes sense, um, a- and the, the. The overall arching goal is to improve all of the other modes to, to counterbalance the, the physical constraints of those arterials.
Um, where I had concern when I put this, a comment on this on, was that by having a level of service F, if there gets a dispute about. What should be done and what level of payment from a developer to our transportation district should be. Um, there could be argument about. Degrees of level of F of the standard that are there and that. By placing it, it, I think the city loses discretionary action that could be sued over. In, in calling it F, if there's a dispute between the city and a developer of. Um, what's necessary, even though it still would remain mitigation with F, what needs to be done. And so I would phrase it more that we have, um, a level of service not as F, but then we have discretionary action to approval. Of a level of F services given other overriding considerations such as increased. Mode shift or other things like that, so a, a developer could say. We could do a traffic study and say, you know, really that light should be, that stop sign should be a traffic light. Either case, the level of service is F. Um, or we wanna put it in a turn lane, they're saying, no, it's still a level of F with or without, but it's still a better F. If that makes sense to some people, um. By doing something and we could get in dispute and it'd be sued over because our goal and policy in our general. In our, in our comprehensive plan is that we are accepted level of F. And that's where I wanna be cautious on that kind of language in there, that we don't pretend ourselves up for not getting the improved level of F. Um, based on suing over the phrasing that we accept F. If that makes some sense, and if you follow transportation stuff, um, you know, you can still be at the, a level of F service, but you know. The delay is less in some cases when you put in traffic mitigation measures.
And, and I think the, the focus for this plan is, is the. The list of long-term improvements that the city would like to see and making sure that the level of service, the currency management program. Is structured in a way that those projects can be implemented and I, and I think the. The way to make sure that developments are, are paying into improvements that, um, do have a, a traffic benefit. Um, but are still, you know, limited to the, the roadway widths is our multimodal level of service standards. So, so developed, developed, we still need to make improvements to all of the other modes as set forth in the city's. Multimodal level of service standards for walk, bike and transit improvements, for example.
Drew, my one question for you on this, because what I, my, I go to principle of principles, so Bothell Everett at a hundred and sixty-fourth. Um, we've been just talking about putting parking on the Mill Creek Boulevard, how do we de-emphasize that? The old plan. Basically was a grid system as we've been talking about, and the city was accepting more traffic on the Mill Creek Boulevard. As a, quote unquote, cut through in avoiding a hundred and sixty-fourth at Mill Creek Boulevard or at, at Bothell Everett Highway. Where the left turn is bad, that's why people line up at both those left turns and the PM peak. As the city wants to develop for our needs, Mill Creek Boulevard, putting angled parking on it, having higher density housing on there. There may be needs for. Specific intersection improvements at that principal to principal arterial where one sixty-fourth and Bothell Everett come together. Or we're gonna be into waiting ten queues to make a left turn there and backing up traffic. And, and honestly, you know, or you do a bus rapid transit with a queue drop or something else, how do we incorporate that intersection into? You know, the city's long-term goal of not making this a cut-through route, because that's where we were ten years ago was, we were. Gonna make Mill Creek Boulevard a cut-through route, when we started talking Mill Creek Boulevard, we yanked the capital project out that we had to do Mill Creek Boulevard. At a hundred and sixty-fourth and we said, hey, let's keep the regional traffic on the principal arterials. But we don't have that in a policy where we're saying that, and so I get a little nervous about. How, as we make this big shift and say, we want our community street back as a collector, you know, or lower level arterial, not a cut-through PM traffic piece. So how would you reckon, how does transpo recommend we cover with that?
So we can definitely explore. You know, potential additional projects, uh. In replace of that previous project that is on, on the books currently at one sixty-fourth Mill Creek Boulevard. But that's definitely something that we would need to develop further.
And I'm just looking at a, a large comprehensive plan level, what do we write to say, hey, this is what we wanna do? We don't wanna create a. A, you know.
Gridlock.
I, Southern California of everywhere is backed up and we made that choice, that was one of the things that we looked at. When they went for Mill Creek Boulevard and said, hey, we want this to be our street. But we haven't addressed that in a policy in transportation, and so that's, that's the only piece.
Think we need to add a specific policy about that and, uh, let us do some work on that, the appropriate language, yeah.
Yeah, we can, there is language within the existing, a plan that I do like that we, we plan on carrying forward about the trade-offs, the inherent trade-offs. In developing a transportation system, and so we can make that more explicit in our policies as well in terms of. What are the values that are important to the community? Why are they make, why are they making certain decisions and priorit, pri-? Prioritizing certain things over the other, making that very explicit and direct, uh, in the policies as well. You know, one, one thing with that desire to have Mill Creek Boulevard be this attractive, safe street, this. You know, one, one thing with that desire to have Mill Creek Boulevard be this attractive, safe street, that's very walkable. One of the added benefits of that is, and the hope is that it will actually take cars off of, off of the roadway. By making it an attractive street, so that's that's always the balance you're 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 playing with is. Is hopefully by making the streets more attractive, yes, there's a downside, which is, okay, that slows down traffic, that impedes some traffic movement, but you get the benefit of. More people out walking and supporting all of that density down uh in that area, right?
I mean, council made those decisions knowingly and understanding it, and I just want to make sure we memorialize that as we do our comprehensive plan. More broad.
Yeah, I'm struggling with the. The action verb because ensure sounds really strong, but. Some kind of language around um ensuring that the future redevelopment of Mill Creek Boulevard um. Supports the operation of of Mill Creek Boulevard as a collector, whatever the street is and not. An arterial or connector, but you know, collector, serving local businesses and residences or something. We gotta work on the language, but something like that, yeah.
I like the direction you're heading.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions on T four?
Yeah, I think we had. Just another phraseology uh issue here, I just want to make sure it made made sense to the commission, so uh. The suggestion was uh for making the project list and the plan. Overall reasonable and affordable, uh, we changed that to fiscally constrained and implementable. Um, it's good, hopefully that. That works for for everyone. That was the idea, so yeah, we were trying to be as explicit as possible.
And affordable, nothing will get done.
I think that's it for transportation unless there are any other comments.
Thank you for your feedback.
So that brings us to our last slide, which I noticed it has a lot of words on it, sorry about that. But this is just uh just a recap of what's coming up, so for in August, we will be. Um, gathering your comments on the utilities, capital facilities, goals and policies. And then we'll also be bringing back some other plans and that. You haven't really had a chance to look at yet, um, it includes some introductory vision statement. Language, community profile, content and language around the sub areas, so. Want to make sure you get a chance to look at that, and then. From there, we'll start to move into the full comprehensive plan and development regulations review with you. Into September and October. And we will have another joint meeting with city council in, I think either late September or October, we have not set the time for that, as I recall. Justin, but we'll, we'll get that soon. Um, dialed in, but that's really to talk about these last elements of the plan that we've been working on and any updates on the development regulations. One thing I did want to mention about that is we did some research about. The planned community business zoning and adapting that as the potential zoning designation for. The Mill Creek Boulevard area at the end of the year to support meeting our growth targets. And um, that is not going to be the end-all be-all. Uh, design and development for Mill Creek, but we do think that the city could. We can go ahead and use that as an a solution, adapt that. And even if we left the five-story max zoning. Um, that we would still be able to show that we can meet um the targets, and that might actually be a a way to. What I want to say, um, if if people were interested to come in and do redevelopment, they might want to wait. Until you actually get to that full redevelopment zoning solution. Because that may include the ability, you know, for example, to have bonus heights, which are a great tool to incentivize. Community gathering spaces, as we talked about in that joint meeting, so um, even if you had like a five, five-story. Base height, you could allow bonus heights, six-story, maybe seven-story setback. And with that, by allowing that extra density. You would ask the developers to provide community gathering spaces or other types of amenities, so. So that could be, that could be handled later, we don't have to worry about that this year, but. It's part of that next piece of work that will happen in the future. Uh, and then so back to this, then we would be with you in planning commission to through October. We need to get these dates kind of figured out, I know staff is working on that. Um, but then at some point in October, we would ask you to formulate your recommendation to city council for the plan. And then it would go to city council, and we would go through the formal adoption process there. We would plan to have a public hearing with planning commission as well as one with. City council for their adoption process, so those would happen in October and and November. I don't know, Justin, if you have anything you want to add, but we'll add some real dates in here soon.
Yeah, I don't really need to add it.
Okay, great.
Um, and just confirming, so when we get to the um later on, it's time to look at the full draft of the comprehensive plan. Um, are we still expecting the uh once a month cadence, or is there any? Doubt about whether we need to have more than a, a more frequent, I know, you know. Towards the beginning of the process, we talked about, oh, sometimes you were like meeting every, what, two weeks or? Or something like that in the in the previous comp plan, so I'm just curious as to whether that's on the table at all for this, or are we at a good pace where we're gonna? Be about one a month.
Andy, don't we discuss breaking maybe the October meetings into two?
We did.
A month to cover the whole plan.
Yeah, so October could be a likely month where we would ask you to meet twice and we would bring. One half of the plan in early October and the other half in late, because it's just a lot, right, to cover in one review and one meeting, so.
I just wanted to double check, you mentioned that there might be a hearing, likely we would have a hearing for when we're actually talking the full comprehensive plan. And if we broke that into two, it'd be a hearing at both of those, right? And it's a hearing, meaning that there could be public comment, right?
Correct, that's the type of hearing it is, and I would inform your recommendation to council. So you're not making a decision about the plan, you're taking in public comment and then formulating a recommendation to go to council, so.
We could potentially do one hearing after we.
Yes.
Two study sections or two sessions.
Okay.
Yeah, because it would cover both, but your work on both and understanding both, so.
So it's more like we're legally required to have it at the one that we formulate the. Uh, recommendation. Uh, is there any proposal for further hearings between now and then?
Well, we have our public meeting coming up, I'm so glad you reminded me next week, um, glad we can. Say that publicly and remind everyone, but we've got the July twenty-fourth public meeting will be up in. Room two hundred in City Hall North. And uh, that's an opportunity for the public to come in while we're still drafting goals and policies and. Gathering input for the plan, so we've got a session from. Believe it's four to five thirty and then one from six to seven thirty. Uh, we just wanted to provide, you know. Maximum flexibility for people who are working or need to get home at night and come back, so. So that's an opportunity for public input. And then the public hearing from planning commission will be another opportunity, that'll be more when the plan is fully drafted. And then we'll have another public hearing as part of the city council adoption process, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, as as we discussed earlier, if we're going to have anybody talk to us or complain about the plan. It'd be great to hear it before we actually set it in stone, instead of say. June of twenty twenty-five, oh, this is terrible, like, you know, it'd be great if you'd said something a year ago.
Yes. We agree.
Okay.
Anything else, any other question?
Okay, uh, anything for the good of the order?
Uh, nothing for me.
Uh, we do have the public meeting, so thank you, Mandy. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I second.
Okay. All in favor? Our meeting is adjourned.